What else you got to do today? You and who else? Oh, God. All right, let's get going then. Public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Easdray. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearings on two ordinances. First ordinance is six forty-six. This is amending the CMC Title X Animal Control Regulations. Is there anyone here would like to speak on ordinance number six forty-six? Yes, please, please approach the podium. State your name and address, please. You have handouts?
Yeah.
PowerPoint? PowerPoint?
Well, not exactly.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't want to read the end of it?
He's military, man.
My name is Richard Sneed. I'm a resident of on Eagle Bend Road in Clinton. I'm also a member of Planning Commission. Let me say that I was not at the November meeting when this matter came before Planning Commission. And so I, as a bunch of the rest of us citizens, sort of picked this up piecemeal and recently. Given that this thing boils up during the holiday period between Thanksgiving and across Christmas, so some of this is, I'm going to speak to, is quite frankly hearsay. So if you look at the little handout that I just gave you, that map there is the Clinton zoning map. We understand that this matter arises, which is really a change in agricultural usage within the R1 residential zoning district. That this matter arises because of an isolated R1 property, which appears to be a single property at the far end, far eastern end of the city. They're just sort of a hangers out in the industrial district. So up in that corner, adjacent to the county. That is my, that's what I'm told. That could be incorrect. And so the reaction of the city then is to propose...
I'm sorry, can you turn the heat down a little bit, Carl? It's getting hot in here pretty quick. Thank you.
And so therefore, the appellants, if you will, are... I have been told that the appellants improved their property to do general agriculture, livestock or equine activity, and invested significant money in it. And then I presume they were told they couldn't do that because they're in the R1 district. And it's precluded by the R1. So the city then proposes these amendments and set a space, amended the existing code to set an acreage limit, if you will, to accommodate it within the broad R1. Well, first I will say that if I'm correct here, and we have a single appellant on a single or even a few properties, who now find themselves, because they were inattentive to the code as it was written, perhaps, and we're going to paint with a broad brush thousands of others, that that is a bad practice, just generally speaking. And it will prove to be poor public policy, particularly when the issue is agriculture, including farm animals inside the residential zone. We all know from history why the restrictions we have were put in place. The issues are public health issues. It's disease. This whole backyard chicken thing, which I've now learned more about after I learned of this, ten years into this experiment, we are again proving to ourselves why we had those restrictions in the first place. And your packet there includes some select articles that I just reproduced for you. In fact, the chicken coops, the backyard chicken coops in California are on lockdown right now because of the reemergence of a virulent bird disease, which had been absent in this country for thirty years, traced by the Centers for Disease Control and the USDA to backyard bird coops, chicken coops. So in other words, we have amateur farmers who are proving to be a health hazard. Now, the other thing in your packet there is this side-by-side that basically audits local cities who have allowed animals, chickens or goats, chickens in the case of Oak Ridge and Knoxville, goats in Knoxville, and the restrictions that they have put in place in order to, in their judgment, do it with acknowledging upfront that these things will intrude on the residential character of the neighborhoods. This trying to manage it as best as can be managed and still enable people to keep a few birds. And so if you look, and I didn't intend this to be for you guys to sit here and study and read down, but just look at the list. And so you see that in Oak Ridge and Knoxville, they are allowing just a couple of things. One, chickens, and in the case of Knoxville, goats. Ours, as it changes, enables everything. The changes that are proposed here essentially allow entry into the residential zone. Before, the way it was worded, agriculture inside the residential zone was basically precluded because of these standoff, these distance requirements. Now, when you say set lot size, which by the way, I would say is rather arbitrary. You set it at three, you set it at two, changes the number of properties. Regardless, at three acres, which is where the current proposal is, now you're bringing it into the residential zone. So therefore, should we not take advantage of the lessons that others have learned? If we really want to do this, should we not have a restrictive, controlled environment, a regulated environment? Now, I might also suggest that what you're talking about here, if you want to do this, this opens a can of worms. Because you're talking about having people on city staff who are competent to go do these inspections. And by the way, these inspections include impromptu inspections in backyards, so not visible from public thoroughfares, but going in and inspecting chicken coops or grazing grounds for goats, in the case of Knoxville.
Richard, let me ask you a quick question because we've become aware of this last twenty-four hours, but there was probably more to what we were looking at, quite honestly. So if you're looking, and I'm just asking you, man to man, as far as if you were here, what would be acceptable, what would be an acceptable farm animal for you? Because I can kind of, I see your point with chickens, and all this is around pretty much chickens. Is there anything else that you'd say I wouldn't be a part of?
Well, I would tell you that if that's for chickens, can you imagine what the regulation would be? If, in fact, there's a reason these localities, these municipalities, haven't allowed cattle. Can you imagine what the regulatory structure would be for that?
Well, how about a horse?
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah.
We'd like to correct one thing. Right now, our ordinance allows everything but swine with restrictions. So we're not adding that to any ordinance. Right now, it's just the restrictions and qualifications. Everything but swine is allowed in the city if you can meet those restrictions, which is a thousand linear feet from building to building, residence to residence, or street.
Which is my point.
And not property line, it's about the actual...
Thousand linear feet, which nobody can satisfy, so you've officially precluded it.
Right. So answer my question, I mean, I didn't say it like to answer my question, I'm not a lawyer, but, sorry, but, I mean, where do you see, because I really wish, don't miss any more meetings.
Look, let me, yeah, I'd have said all this, yeah, I'd have said it.
So is horse, does that be something you all look at?
You know what, I don't think that's appropriate, not inside the residential zone. Now, if I'm right, so let me go back. Had I been at the meeting, if I were in your seat right now, I'd throw this thing back to Planning Commission, say, "Really, this calf."
Well, I think we're getting close to doing that.
And so let me just throw this out, and then everybody can digest it, and you can tell me if I'm full of it. If this, if I'm right about this property, and it's sitting right there in the corner of the M2, and right across the creek is the county, why don't we rezone that lot? I mean, quite frankly, it's rural, it's out in the country. I don't, I don't think it's necessarily inappropriate up there or along any periphery of Clinton which abut agriculture or open to do this kind of thing. I think property owners ought to have the liberty to do that. Now, we just approved, in just a few short months, a P1 zone for Clinton, brand spanking new, didn't exist before. Today, we don't have an A1, an agricultural zoning, Clinton. It's clear that when zoning was laid in for the city, that we really didn't anticipate that. We anticipated the next level up, which is R1, housing, the city would grow, all this kind of stuff. So we didn't zone for agriculture. Maybe we ought to rethink that. Now, you know, somebody, one of the C lawyers, to go back to my Navy expression, no, I'm not insulting my Marine colleague here.
I'm familiar with C lawyers.
Some might say, well, you can't do that single lot or two because that's spot zoning. My read of Tennessee code and my understanding is that's not true. Because across the creek, the county is unzoned, and the current nature of that area is agricultural or rural. So therefore, it is not spot zoning, which means that you would rezone, which suggests you can't rezone something that's contrary to the surrounding activity, which is the way we have applied it since I've been on Planning Commission.
Richard, let me stop you just for a second. Is there anyone, I know there's several people that wanted to speak on this behalf. Is he, would you like to include anything that he's not talking about right now? Or is he covering your concerns also?
There might be something else I'd like to bring up.
Richard, do you mind if I just let her step?
I don't mind at all.
Because one thing I think is going to happen is, I think we are going to send that back to the Planning Commission for y'all to look at it again and go back through the system, so to speak. But I will make sure we've captured all the concerns that y'all have. And Richard, thank you very much for your input.
It's my duty, right?
That's right, just don't miss any more meetings.
And before this fine young lady takes the podium, I'll just go ahead, and I make a motion that we table the ordinance and refer it back to Planning Commission for further consideration.
Would that be for both ordinances?
Yeah, but we have to wait, we have to close the public...
Close this and say, okay, well, that's going to be my motion and my intent. We have a lot of good evidence. I applaud Mr. Sneed in bringing this to, but it's a lot to digest, and I think it would be inappropriate for us to take any action without deliberate...
And we can move on.
And then referring it back to Planning Commission for their re-input.
So yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kathy Taylor, and I live at 808 Eagle Bend Road, which is just two doors down from the wedding venue. So, you know, what concerns me is I've now lived on Eagle Bend Road for over twenty-five years, and I've lived in the city of Clinton for over forty. And I can tell you how thrilled I was to move on to Eagle Bend Road. It was such a quiet neighborhood, very nice neighborhood. And the integrity of the neighborhood, not to beat it at horse, changed when the wedding venue came in. There's lots of loud music on the weekends now, hundreds of strangers walk in through the neighborhood. So all of those things have changed our neighborhood in one way, and that was done through a zoning change. And I would hate to see this zoning change further change the integrity of the neighborhood. The way it is written, and I understand you're talking about tabling it and looking at it again, but the three-acre restriction, you know, when I pull the plat map of my neighborhood, there are three large lots in the neighborhood that meet that restriction. One has the wedding venue on it. The other large landowner would likely like to farm it and put animals back there. And the other one, I don't really know about. But it's clearly covered by many, many, many smaller people that will not take advantage of that and probably most likely not going to be excited about it. So I would just really ask that you do look at this very carefully, be more precise. Like, I personally think it should be, the restrictions from property lines should be in place to keep it from infringing on your neighbors. It's, I mean, I don't think all of the neighbors should bear the brunt of having an agricultural venue next to them. Secondly, I think I would like you to look at what animals you allow. And I know you said anything can be allowed now except for swine. I don't know how, why those horn pigs get run out. But, but, I mean, I don't want a peacock screaming in the morning next to my house. And, you know, I read in Oak Ridge, you can't have roosters. Well, how about peacocks? What about lions and tigers and domesticated pets? You know, all of these things, if you don't say what can come in there, then anything can come in there but pigs evidently. And then also, how many? How many can come in? And is there some number that you're going to allow in a certain acreage? And also, are these people who are going to bring these horses in? Are they going to be able to board horses? And if so, does that make it a business again? So all these things, I think you really need to look at what you're doing in our residential neighborhoods, which we all moved into just to reside, not to farm or make money. We just moved in there to reside, and that's, I think, what our one neighborhood really is all about. So that's really all I want to say.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate your input. Anyone else that, things we haven't talked about? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dr. Shaleen Bonney. I'm a veterinarian, and I reside at 756 Block House Valley Road. I am just about eight tenths of a mile or less than a half a mile within the county line. And I have close to five acres that I would like to use. Doesn't necessarily mean I want chickens, doesn't necessarily mean I want to board horses. I definitely don't want pigs, but I would like to use my land. And so the way my land is subdivided right now, it's a little over two acres each lot, two lots backing up, with a $30,000 horse fence that totally surrounds the property. I totally agree with this lady that there should be a number per acre. When you look at this kind of thing, it usually is maybe one horse per acre. It's not boarding. It's certain animals. I totally agree with the chickens, probably is probably not the best. Most likely in California, it's turkeys that's causing the disease that everybody's shutting down on. But I would like the board to think about us, that I'm not across the river or wherever this gentleman's talking about. I am practically in the country. If you look at Block House, there's animals all up and down Block House. There's cattle, there's chickens, there's geese, there's everything. We are pretty much out in the country. We're buttoned right up to the country. So I'd like you to take that into consideration, please, that I would like to use my land and kind of think about that when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Anyone else?
So can I get two things?
Two things, two minutes. You need to come back up to the podium, Richard.
You see, this is exactly what we should take a look at. Because down, up and down Block House, you had a lot of large tracts down through there.
So this, not unlike this other one, and they are up against the city. Why don't we just rezone it? Let's create an agricultural zone and rezone it, pardon me?
That's the map actually showing the parcels. The pink is everything above three acres. The blue is everything above two acres. So you can kind of see right there where the areas are.
Yeah, so, yeah, and that's not just occupied, those are all lots. Yeah. Well, so you can see over there in South Clinton, there's a ton of them. So maybe we ought to rethink this, right? And not necessarily by acreage, it's about where they're located and the nature of that community today, right? Different than when it was originally zoned.
You're going to have the opportunity to do that.
Now, now, let me just say one other thing, which is important. The way that the city proposal is currently written allows primary usage to be general agriculture. That means that I could go next door to Kathy, turn that house there into a barn, and farm the whole thing. You'll see that Knoxville and Oak Ridge have written their ordinances in all my check sheet, I tried to list all the qualities, to prevent that. And so those are the kinds of things, but see, that creates a regulatory infrastructure that then somebody's got to enforce, and there's overheads associated with that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Richard. Anything else on ordinance number six forty-six? Any additional comments on ordinance six forty-seven? These kind of go hand in hand. This is amending the CMC Title 14, the agricultural uses in R1 zones. So that's the same thing we've been talking about. If nothing else, as to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Public hearing adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Councilman Easdray. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farrell.
Here.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this afternoon be given by Councilman Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank thee for the season of the year. We thank thee for the gift that you gave us. We thank thee for the spirit that we share and that we hopefully will continue to share. Be with us, we pray that you be with our city, be with our city staff, our city employees, be with the citizens of Clinton, that we may truly enjoy the spirit and feeling of Christmas during this time. Help us to share the love and the fellowship that brought about by the Christmas field. Be with us now as we do the business of the city, lead, guide, direct us, that we may truly use the wisdom that you've given us. Be with us in all we endeavor to do for the sake of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry.
Mr. Mayor, can we take this ordinance back up out of town? I have a hard 215 I have to depart for, and I'd hate to miss that. And I don't know if that's allowable.
Should that be appropriate? Let's be fine. You're going to make the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow the...
Under the move, new business up?
Yeah.
Thirteen, to move, do you mean that move?
To move this...
Six forty-six, six forty-seven.
Yeah, as it relates to, I amend the agenda that we take up ordinance six forty-six and ordinance six forty-seven currently.
Hear a motion on amendment?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So my motion on ordinance six forty-six and ordinance six forty-seven is to table both and refer it back to Planning Commission for further consideration and input and instruction.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Zach. Do you hear a motion for the review and the approval of the meetings and the minutes of the previous meeting dated November 25th, 2019?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, any, anything else from citizens? Any grievance or praises? That's a praise man right there. Come on up, Tim. State your name and address, please.
Tim Thompson, 245 North Main Street. I'm retiring at the end of this month from president of Anderson County Economic Development. I just wanted to come by and publicly thank you for the support you've given me over the last fifteen years on all of our economic development projects. I've come before you several times, and you've always approved everything I've asked for. It's funny, I've been in economic development for twenty-seven years. The biggest complaint I hear from people like me is we can't get our city council or mayor to do anything. Well, I have never had that complaint here. I'm so thankful that I've had you folks to work with. I want to thank Mayor Burton for all the support he's given me, and Roger. He's been there for me every time I needed him. You've done a great job in helping me recruit industry and maintaining our three industrial parks. So I just wanted to tell you thanks before I ride into the sunset.
Thank you. Tim, we, you know, we have the mayors of the cities and county are doing the interview process for his position, and I tell you, there's big shoes to fill. You probably haven't done, you might have, but you wouldn't want to share it. How many jobs this guy's created? And how many dollars he's brought into this county and city? We would buy him lunch every time we saw him. And he's done a fantastic job, and again, thank you for everything that you've done, Tim. We'll miss you. You won't be far away, we'll miss you.
I'll be around.
Thank you. I got to quit looking at you when I talk. I get, I don't know why I get choked up, because you look like you're getting choked up. It's like, quit doing that. Anybody else? Under Communications for the Mayor, I have a couple of things. Richard Dawson just left. He gave me a letter, he's going to resign from ACDA, and I just wanted to thank him for his time on the board. And, but he's, he wants to travel and be retired for a while, which I certainly, and I think we're all aspiring to, so thank, thank, thank Richard for his service there. Also, one thing we failed to mention during our prayer, and it's my fault, that, you know, we lost two great people last week in the city, and that's, the first one's Bone Seavers. And the people, I see a lot of people like me that have gray hair that remember Bones. And I tell people, and I hope I say it the right way, if you liked Bones or you didn't like Bones, he had a tremendous impact on this community. And Clinton wouldn't be what it is today if it wasn't for him. And there's still some people, I know Roger was hired by him, I think Archie, of course, you're around, David's here, Bill, of course. So there's still some good ones left, but he certainly had a huge impact in the city and also in this community. And everything that, if you're a mayor, or if you're your city council or city manager, you're always compared to Bones, because he is, he is the gold standard. I think he'll always be, so. Also, Monty Champion passed away last week, and she certainly had her contributions too in this community, mostly felt through education and through her church. And I grew up Monty in Westwood, and that's, I tell people, that's the tough thing about living where you grow up, because you go to a lot of funerals, but we'll miss her too. So. One thing I wanted to say, and Richard, I certainly, Richard still here? I certainly appreciate, Becky tell Richard, certainly appreciate him coming in. This is the democratic process. This is great, you know, to have these type of meetings where you have open dialogue and concerns, and we always try to do what's best, and this is probably some things that we needed to shore up before we move along with this. But I will say, and this goes back to an article that was in the paper a couple of weeks ago. I was waiting for some type of rebuttal, and we never received one. But I'll say in general that, you know, this leadership here on the council, I mean, as far as Roger and his department heads and this council, will always, underline, always... But I'll, I'll say in general that, you know, this leadership here on the council, I mean, as far as Roger and his department heads and this council, will always, underline, always, try to do the best thing and do the right thing for our citizens and our taxpayers. Our, our citizens that are here today and our citizens that are going to be here tomorrow. And I'll stand by that until I leave or I get voted out. But I'm, I'm, I, I think there were some, the people that know what's going on is, is, it was misconstrued as far as the actions we took on a particular matter that was the right thing to do. And, um, and I just wanted, and the paper didn't say that, but, but I'm gonna say it, that, that we did the right thing. And I'm very proud of this, this, this council and Roger and department heads, always trying to do the right thing. So, that's it for me. I've talked enough. Committee reports?
Scott.
Yes.
United Way.
Oh, sorry, we gotta move on. Uh, Naomi, we got a check for you.
Also, this, the United Way committee, I think, will come up.
Amy Fiddy?
Yeah. Come on up. JB, take the picture.
Angela, I'll let Angela talk about it. She can explain just a minute. JB's will do the picture. Yeah. Get 'em together, JB.
I will do the picture in a minute. On the night, we did a fundraiser for the United Way. We have a United Way committee, um, and they have been doing a lot of work in getting fundraising started. So, the night of the Christmas tree lighting, we actually did a chili cook-off and a kiss a pig contest. We raised a thousand fifty-five dollars for the United Way. Um, and I do want, we have the United Way committee members up here that have all been working on the planning, and it was open to the community, and we had a wonderful turnout. Um, so, we just want to be able to help support the United Way with all the good they do for our community.
We're gonna come up here and take a quick picture. My coordinator, Kelly Johnson.
You need to seal that.
Come up here. Do we do this right here?
Uh, I don't feel like that.
I have it ears.
Hold, hold your breath, Scott. Suck it. Great job, guys. Why did, what?
Mayor, I've been asked about the pig.
I tell you what, if you're talking about, that wasn't the kiss. Y'all should be ashamed. I thought it was everybody. You bring that pig, I give it a kiss. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give a little peck. Is it here?
Oh, it's all day.
Uh, I'm sure you can. Let me think about it. City School Board report? Ms. Johnson? Scott, do you have anything? Happy New Year. It's all good. Um, Clinton Regional Planning Commission report? Mr. Gann?
Due to the holidays and everything, the, uh, you won't find anything in your packet. The, uh, uh, Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals met, uh, actually Monday night. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals applicant Matthew Paul Robbins requesting a home occupation at two oh five Marcia Drive. Uh, he's going to do business out of his home, nothing on site, other than some repair and everything, no sales. Uh, we, we talked about the limitations on that, and, and that was approved, subject to, uh, him meeting those guidelines. Uh, second, Aspire Foundation requesting side setback to one foot for property located at five eleven Clinch Avenue. This is the new location for Summers Monument, and that was needed, uh, for the manufacturing, uh, phase of what they, they do business there. This is the relocation of Summers Monuments, uh, with Aspire. The Regional Planning Commission also met the same night. Applicant Waffle House requesting site plan review for property located at two two five five North Charles Seavers Boulevard. Uh, they're gonna tear down and, and build a brand-new Waffle House on the same site. Uh, so, that is, that is coming. It'll be a little bit bigger, we understand. Uh, so, that was approved. Uh, secondly, the number of ones dealing with Aspire here. Aspire Foundation requesting final plat review for property located at five eleven Clinch and, uh, site plan review for property located at five eleven Clinch. This was a redrawing, redesigning, uh, re, uh, working of the property, uh, where Summers Monument will be. Also, uh, there was in the packet a, uh, note from the adjoining property owner, which, which had no problem with that, so that was approved. Uh, fourth applicant, Aspire Foundation requesting rezoning to P1, and there are a number of parcels in there. Basically, I've, if I'm not, uh, which does include the property, one and a half acres from the open TVA property. Uh, this is, this is the part of Aspire Park south of the railroad. The old golf course, the ridge, down to the, down to the river. So, that would be rezoning that area to the new P1 zone. Uh, so, that was, that was approved. Then, Aspire Foundation requesting site plan review for Carden Road, and, and that was also approved. As we've talked about, I think, uh, Aspire is becoming a part of the planning commission. As many, many times as we've seen him, we're hoping, we won't have to see him as much in the future. And then applicant Black Horse Capital Partners requesting bond setting for sinking spring roads improvements. We didn't get the exact amount on that, but it will be the highest bid plus as the city guidelines implement twenty percent. Originally, they thought that would come out of a TIF, but that's not totally in place yet. So, there is a, there is a number there that they're gonna have to cover, uh, to, to bring that up to what our guidelines set up. So, that, that also was approved. And then some things that we did discuss, uh, Mr., I think the mayor had, among others, had talked about, uh, uh, appearance on some of our properties in the city that, uh, as far as zoning goes. And we did vote to make a change, or we did discuss and make a change in the land use policy, uh, so that in the future, site plan reviews will include a rendering of what this property is going to look like when it is finished. So, we're gonna get a visual presentation of what it's supposed to look like prior to any approval on our part. So, hopefully, that will, that will help. Uh, I think the general feeling was that probably we could have avoided some problems in the past had we had this involved in our land use policy. That if we'd have known what something was gonna look like, we might not have been as quick to approve it. And also, there is discussion, and, and we'd welcome your feedback on this. Uh, one of the things that was in the vision was, uh, a re-doing or a re-division or reconsideration of the R2 zone, which is the combined residential and business zone. And we are looking at the possi- at, uh, at a, uh, I think we've, we've dubbed it the central, yeah, the Central Business District. And we're looking at what may be involved there and how, one of the things we're interested in is how far should the Central Business District extend? What, what areas should it include? There will be some guidelines within that, but, uh, what should be the, what should be the, uh, parameters of that? How far down Oak Ridge Highway? How far up toward the interstate? What, what do we want to include in what, what may have been formerly an R2 district into the Central Business District? And then, what? B1, okay. And then also, uh, we are looking, one of the things that has popped up is, is the use of la- what, I guess, best description is land air containers for storage by business, in particular along Seavers Boulevard. And, uh, we're looking at that and seeing exactly what we, we can do. I think we're estimating there's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve of those containers on Seavers Boulevard. Uh, right now, they're allowed to do that on business property. And we're looking at, uh, you know, should we implement or try to implement something to kind of control, control that aspect? But that, uh, busy, busy meeting for, for the last two, last Monday night. Any questions?
Any questions for Councilman Gann? I guess I have one, more of a, so, let me ask you a question, though. You, you get the final, um, plat review as far as the pictures and everything. So, do you feel confident, and does staff feel confident that we can require a certain exterior on that building based on codes? Or is that, would, would you feel like it'd be more based on your preference? Because you really need to have some type of code.
I think our, our, I think the guidelines that we've talked about, is it, is it in keeping with the culture of our neighborhoods and cities?
Right.
It's not my personal idea.
Yeah, but I also, I guess you're, what you're saying is, I just wonder if we need to take that a step farther through resolution or something to be a lot, lot more specific as far as exterior material, materials used.
I think the discussion that came up, and, and might be helpful here, uh, I don't, I don't think we want to tie ourselves into anything too specific. We want to have the ability to say, you know, that's acceptable, that's not acceptable. Because while I may want brick, you may want stone, somebody else may want some...
Well, I just think the only, and I'm, I don't know, I mean, the rest of the council can ju- can jump in. I just don't, I think we need to get away, especially our, our business district, um, high retail areas, to get away from metal buildings.
And I think we can cover that in, in consideration of the, of the...
But, but I guess my question is, I know what y'all's intent is, but I don't know if y'all have the teeth to do that with, based on current codes.
Our advise, uh, advising from Joe Barrett, who's our, said that this, he felt like this could be handled. He said we could probably pass ordinances or resolutions, but he thought it could be handled through the implementation of the land use policy.
Can you ask him just to, to work with staff and make sure that we, we're comfortable from, even from a, from an implementation standpoint and legal standpoint, that we can do that? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the feeling was, we don't want to hamstring ourselves.
Well, I mean, I'll give you an example, and I appreciate, appreciate people wanting to invest in our city, but, you know, going, you know, towards Westwood, down towards Lake City Highway, there's a huge buil- uh, buil- building. It's a pretty building, but it's a metal building.
Yeah.
And it is so prominent when you're either leaving town or coming into town. I don't know, I think we can just do better. I think we can do a little better than that.
I think it's gonna be a bounce house and party area.
Yeah, and again, I, I, I underline, I mean, I appreciate them wanting to invest in, here in town, but I, I, you know, I think we need to put our best foot forward when people are coming and leaving our town, and, you know, how those buildings look. So, okay.
We'll talk to Joe and see.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clinton Utilities Board report? You have anything, Councilman?
All is well, nothing to report.
Yes.
Do you have any outages due to the weather?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but I usually don't get phone calls. But no, everything's well, and, um, just, just quickly, the, it, the fiber optic companies are ripping up your streets, not CUB and not Public Works.
Correct. Just to speak on that.
I'll hand that over to them.
That is due to state law, state and federal law, and it is a very restrictive law for the city. We have very little say-so over them digging in public right of way. Pretty much state law says they can do it, and there's nothing we can do about it. While we have learned this week, we can, though, make them follow our guidelines on traffic control and putting stuff back the way it should be. And we have made touch with the, it's Verizon actually doing it. They have a subcontractor, which has a subcontractor that's doing the tearing up. We have talked to Verizon and the main contractor about, um, some of the conditions, and they were out here yesterday actually trying to straighten some of them up.
So, they are responsible for returning it to somewhat of its previous condition?
Yes, and we do have a fifty thousand dollar bond, that if they don't, we can pull the bond and get it replaced or repaired.
Thank you. Um, Larry, any other board or committee reports?
Nothing I'm aware of at the moment.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck?
Thank you, Mayor. Projects and activities, we have advertised request proposal for engineering services for the Transportation Alternative Program grant for the city of Clinton sidewalk and pedestrian improvements. Phase one of the project, after evaluation of the proposal, we are recommending that the proposal from Cannon and Cannon Incorporated be accepted, and also request authorization for the execution of the engineering service contract. The contract amount will be termed at a further date with negotiations, but within our budget.
You make a motion? You hear a motion?
Yeah.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finance, how to defer to Gail?
You've got your finance report. Uh, keep in mind, we don't have state shared or sales tax because of your early meeting this month, so, um, but we're still looking really good this year. We've collected, as of yesterday, over eight hundred and thirty thousand in property tax this year, so we're looking good. Um, I do need you all to make a motion to approve the payoff of that school debt that you all approved for the plan. We have gotten a payoff of three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty cents. We'll pay it off sometime right after the first of the year, so I need you all to approve appropriation for that amount.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, Police Department, we've got several items to surplus and to put on GovDile's website for disposal. We have two Dell Latitude D six thirty computers. We have three Crown Vics, a two thousand five, two thousand eight, and two thousand nine.
Hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, trying to be a good neighbor, we have also removed the falling vehicle from service, and we requested it be declared surplus and transferred to the city of Norris in accordance with the TCA purchasing guidelines. It's a two thousand Ford Crown Victoria with a hundred and nine thousand miles.
Second.
Hear a motion and a, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, just a couple of other things. A new program that, uh, Public Works and the Recreation Department kind of combined, or will start this year, and that's a tree recycling. We're gonna do it the third and fourth, I think, third and fourth of January, Friday, Saturday, from two to four PM behind the community center in front of the recycle center. So, if you got a Christmas tree, a live Christmas tree or, or cut tree, you can bring it there. They will have a chipper. They'll actually put it through it, mulch it up. You want the mulch to take home, they'll load it up and let you take it back home. First time we've done that, and I think it'll be a good, good service.
Make sure we put it on social media.
We will.
Yeah, social media.
Update on Magnet Mills, we talked to our attorney, Albert Harb, yesterday. He agreed, since we've not seen any significant improvements in the last four weeks. He has sent them a letter and once again put them on notice. Five, ten good working days, they'd have it done. So, we've given them due to the holidays to January seventeenth to have it completed. If not, we'll condemn the property and move in ourself, clean it up, put another lien on it.
Any questions for Mr. Houck?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Roger. Under Ordinances and Resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, this is ordinance number six forty-eight. Amending CMC Title Eight dash alcoholic beverages. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamy?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Fair? Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six forty-eight passes on first reading. Ordinance number six forty-nine, this is rezoning R1, R2, and B2 to P1 Aspire Park off Yarnell Road, Clinch, Clinch Avenue and Carden Road. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamy?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Fair? Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six forty-nine passes on first reading. Adoptions and resolutions of resolutions, resolution number seven ninety. This is a CUB in lieu of tax payments for the year ending six thirty, two thousand twenty. And let me just say again, contribution in lieu of taxes that CUB's given to the city of Clinton is over one point seven million dollars for this, for this budget year, so certainly appreciate that. Um, hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution number seven ninety-one, the school system capital outlay note. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would y'all like to say anything about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number seven ninety-one passes. Any old business for us?
I want to give you an update for the Lincoln Center.
Yes, they, uh, opened today.
Uh, they will have both recycle, the way I understood it, both recycle centers open today, but then closing the old one down tomorrow, and everything will be at the new one.
And can you remind us of the process that land goes for sale?
Yeah. We, which, the agreement that goes back to, I guess, two thousand eleven, uh, we agreed to pay back the hundred and seven thousand of the...
uh, we agreed to pay back the hundred and seven thousand, it was overpayment and sales tax, around a hundred and seven. Then we, then the current property has to be put up for either sealed bid or auction. And then, I think we did a appraisal then, and it has to meet that appraisal price. If not, we agreed, if it sells for less than that, we agreed to make up the difference.
Okay.
And that was the agreement to get it, get it moved out.
That was a long-term problem, that's a very satisfying.
I got letters back to the mid-eighties between the city and county and the state on it.
Um, I asked Mayor Frank about that a couple of days ago, and that was the timeframe, I think they're gonna try to get the, the auction as pretty quick turnaround, and they will, it will be in, as far as what she knew, it was gonna be an auction, public auction, and not a sealed bid, which I think would be better for all parties. So, good.
Um, any other old business?
A que-, uh, question, do we have any update on the fifteen thousand dollars that we gave CAC in their transition to C, to, uh, Ethera, or is it still in a black hole someplace?
I was talking to Susan Bowen just a couple of days ago, I guess it was last week, and she said it's still tied up with IRS. Uh, so really didn't get a definite on it, that they had not approved whatever they needed to.
They have our fifteen thousand.
Yes.
It is moving forward.
At a snail's pace.
Any other old?
Ron, if you, if you're gonna talk now, you gotta go to the podium.
Everybody wants to see your face. Name an address, please.
Ron Young, three hundred Delta Street, Clinton. Uh, if you've been reading the paper about DHS, well, that's part of the prop.
Okay.
So, that's all, best I can take.
It's dealing with government.
Well, uh, the person that I've dealt was dealing with got terminated in September, so having to redo that, so I've talked to the person four times over the last couple of months. Like you said, it's a snail's pace.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Any other old business? Any new business?
Yes, we'll go out on a flying color here, end of the year. Uh, Mr. Houck, update us on two things, if you don't care, our mayor, whoever, uh, the addition, I guess, to the football field, what renovations we may or may not do. And I guess the second question, we just go from there, just an update on the armory, what the commission is saying, what they're not saying, so forth, at this point.
Um, on the football field, I met with Tim Parrott last week, uh, me and JB and I did, and we would like to move forward with it. We've had, we've had plans for over a year. Uh, the county schools is, is wishing to partner with us. Tim's gonna have to take it back to his board, it's just me and him talking, but he thinks they will. So, we're hoping to maybe a first year get together and, and get our plans together and bring it before both bodies to get approval to move forward.
Good, okay. And then the armory, we're already, I guess, with the commission and us and money, one point four million or seven or whatever it came up to me.
Well, we, we had, uh, our studio four came out, architect, and gave us some, some estimates. You know, their estimate was one point two low, one point four high. They had, did add some, some things in there, um, cosmetic things that, that made that go a little high. I felt like the roof price was a little high, cause we've actually prepped, priced the roof to get it replaced, probably a hundred, a hundred and ten. I think his was about two hundred, which he was just using some industry standards. Um, you know, to get in the building the way it is now, you could get in at a lot cheaper than one point two. Uh, but it's my understanding, commission didn't take any action on either, either that or the church for moving in the senior center.
Well, I think, uh, there was some misinformation out there, um, about the armory. I think people really honed in on this one point four million dollars, which is, which I think is a ridiculous amount. But to your point, I mean, there's things we can do that would bring that cost much, much lower. Um, I've had a, a few people calling today after the meeting, a couple commissioners that would like for us to revisit that, cause I think there, there's still a lot of support on the commission to, to look at it again. And guys, and I welcome you to talk to Roger about this too, cause of course it's gonna be a collective effort, is I, my, my position is, we're in a great financial position, probably the best we've ever been in the city. And we've take care, we've taken care of a ton of things, you know, from equipment, to buildings, whatever. I think that the stepchild in this whole, so far has been the armory. I mean, we haven't put, hardly, we put some money in it for, for air, I think, but, but really, we haven't put any money in it. And I guess I'm looking forward thinking is, if, 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 if the, the county, we don't partner with them with the senior center, I think our desire would be to still have a tenant in there to use it. Cause the worst thing about a building being empty, it just deteriorates, it gets worse and worse. So, I think we really need to talk, I'd encourage you to talk to Roger and maybe, and I'm gonna talk to Roger, as far as, you know, what we wanted, what's, what's our long-term use for the armory and, and what we, what's our plan to, to get it to where it needs to be? Cause again, if the senior center steps away and does something else, then, then I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make some corrections on our own. We're gonna have to replace a roof, we're gonna have to, you know, those are the original windows since the armory was built. You know, that, you can imagine the energy efficiency in there.
None.
And, and, you know, and some little things, and, and heat and air is, is probably, is gonna be an issue too. So, there's some big, big expenses we have to look at and to see where we want, what, what we want to do moving forward. But I think if we're all in consensus, like, we're gonna do this anyway, let's go ahead and have a plan for it and, and maybe, you know, if, if it's okay with everybody, maybe have Roger present it to, to Terry and say, this is what our plans are and see if they're still interested in going into the senior center.
Can the remodel be a phase one, phase two, and phase three type thing?
You know, something I want to remind council, right now, we have a contract for three more years with Rome State. And in that contract, just like the contract we have with the county schools, that we're talking about the football field, that we'll negotiate and split those costs to the major roof, heat and air, would be split between the city of Clinton and Rome State, State of Tennessee. And, you know, so if the roof, like a better word, fell in tomorrow, I would be approaching Rome State, let's put a new roof on it, split it fifty-fifty in some way. Sometimes we've done that, we've provided labor, they provided materials, we did that with the city schools two years ago, I think, when we replaced heat and air units on the gym. Uh, we, we put them in, provided the labor, and they bought the material. So, some way, we don't, we don't just say fifty-fifty dollar, we just kind of leave it up for us to negotiate a fifty-fifty, whether it be labor, material, or cash. So, you know, right now, you know, and, and we have that legal contract with Rome State.